This evening, and Councilor Peralta unfortunately had a preplanned thing that he was not able to change for the evening. So we, not that we need a quorum for a work session, but we have a quorum, and it is 5:30 PM. And I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 13th, 2023 meeting. Are we, we recording? Yes, okay. To the June 13th, 2023 work session of the McMinnville City Council. I think, as you all know, tonight, we're taking an opportunity to meet with BDS Planning and Urban Design, and this is part of our long-term strategic plan in terms of how the city of McMinnville works with its division and partner of McMinnville Water and Light. The McMinnville Water and Light Commission had a similar meeting earlier today, and then tomorrow, we will all be meeting in joint session to work through the product of these series of meetings. And with that, I would like to call on Brian Scott, the managing partner of BDS, and please take it away. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Brian Scott with BDS Planning. I'm joined by my partner, Andres Mantilla. Can we have the slides up on the screen?
Could you talk a little closer to your phone, please?
No, better than that. I should have done that automatically. Thank you. So our agenda today is to do a little welcome and introductions and talk about some ground rules and expectations for this process, the process itself, and intended outcomes. And then the substance of the conversation is a quick review of the charter of the McMinnville Water and Light, give you feedback from individual engagement that we did with each of you and each of the Water and Light Commission members, as well as the executives of both organizations, and then open it up with, for some discussion. We have three questions for discussion amongst the council. We, as the mayor said, we had a similar conversation with the Water and Light Commission this afternoon. We will combine the notes from those two things to put together a suggested framework for the conversation they're all going to have together tomorrow. So that's, that's what our purpose is here. Before we get into all of that, the mayor was going to make some introductory remarks.
Thank you very much. Well, I think that there's a couple things that I'd like to say. One is that I appreciate your time, your extra time in taking on this work. We have two organizations that have worked hand in hand since, since, well, since they both existed, when they came into formation at nearly the same time. And as we all know, over the last couple of years, there's been some disruption in that working relationship. And the goal of this is really not to pick apart anything that's happened in the past, but to focus on the future and making sure that we're addressing the types of organizational needs to carry these two organizations into the future for generations. And so that is the work that we are undertaking here jointly and independently, as independent bodies and then jointly. And based on the meeting earlier today, I would say that there was a great thing that came out right away, and I am sure it'll be addressed here again today. But what's wonderful, and what we can keep in mind as we go through this work, which could at times be uncomfortable, but what we can keep in mind is that we have a shared value, the, the commission and the council. We all want to work for the betterment of the citizens of McMinnville, and we all care deeply about the city of McMinnville, and it's why we are all in service. I have kind of eternal optimism, but I have a tremendous amount of optimism coming out of the work session at Water and Light earlier today. I feel like there were some clearly defined ide, clearly defined steps that could be taken. I'm sure that this body will be just as productive. And thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. By way of introduction, I'm the managing partner. I founded BDS Planning about 15 years ago, and I'm joined by Jacqueline Robinette, who's our project manager, and she, she leads our organizational development work at the firm, and she's over there taking notes at the moment. And Andres Mantilla is a partner in the firm and has been leading our work with the Water and Light in the last few minutes. You'll hear from him shortly. The firm is a multidisciplinary firm. We focus on consensus facilitation, inclusive process, organizational development, and place management. We facilitated dozens and dozens and dozens of strategic plans for public agencies and nonprofit organizations around the Pacific Northwest and across the country, including strategic plans for the city of McMinnville, the city of Salem, city of Tacoma, city of Issaquah, Washington, and many other organizations. Our history in McMinnville began when Jeb Bladine asked me, when I was running the Oregon Downtown Development Association, to come to McMinnville and see what I could do to help with a downtown program for McMinnville. We had a beer in the window of the Blue Moon, and I told him about this great statewide program, and he told me, well, that's all great, and this is how it's going to work in McMinnville, which you could summarize as we're going to pay about a third as much as anybody else paid. So we did it Jeb's way. But we founded the McMinnville Downtown Association in the next couple of years, and I've provided a lot of support to them the rest of the time I was doing that work through 2001. Got the, the great opportunity to come back to McMinnville a few years ago and help all of you with the McMinnville's MACTOWN 2032 strategic plan for the city. And then we've gotten to come back again the last two, three months, working on a strategic plan for the McMinnville Water and Light. And that, it was that work and this tension between the city and the Water and Light that led us to the, the exercise we're doing right now. One of the key objectives in the Water and Light's strategic plan is that they should develop a McMinnville Water and Light and city framework with clear roles and responsibilities and opportunities for collaboration on behalf of the citizens of McMinnville, which the mayor was referring to that sort of general sentiment. So I'm guessing you're all on board with that. But we want to dig into that a little further. So we've been around some, but we're not, we're not in McMinnville every day. So hopefully, we can be useful as neutral facilitators. Moving, Andres is going to walk you through some ground rules and expectations and talk about the process a little bit.
Thank you, Brian. So as we go through this process, we're going to discuss some individual engagement takeaways. There might be some, some tension in the terms and in the, and in the things that we, we bring up and talk about. So it's really good to kind of set some ground rules and expectations. And I think these are pretty common to the way that you guys, as a, as a council, do your business. So we want to encourage you to participate fully. We want each of you to have a perspective on this issue through the interactions that you've had through this council and with your community. And so we want you to bring that to this discussion, and you to avoid interrupting each other so that everybody gets their say. In that way, make space for others to speak. We encourage you to speak from your own experience instead of generalizing, and really accept hands-on facilitation from Brian and myself as we go through this. We're really going to try to let everybody have their say, but really, we want to try to move the agenda along so that we're able to, to cover the topics that, that we need to. Important to assume good intentions, not only today, of your other, of your fellow council members, but the good intentions of the commissioners as well. As, as the mayor mentioned, we had a very productive meeting this morning, and I've been leading the facilitation of that group for several months. And I could attest to that they have a North Star of providing service and to the community of McMinnville and its citizens. Understand the difference between intent and impact, and seek consensus and compromise so that the group can progress together. And that's going to be especially important as we go into tomorrow's session. Just a little bit about the process and then some of the intended outcomes. When we talk about what are we hoping to achieve out of not just today, but tomorrow, as we, as we work for this framework, our intended outcome is to develop a joint framework that clarifies roles and responsibilities of the council, the commission and their members, as well as strengthened mutual relationships. At the end of this process, we hope to have a tool, a document, a set of principles that can accomplish that. What we are not setting up in this process is a review of any sort of individual staff performance, and you'll understand a little bit more, we'll speak a little bit more to as to why. But I think it's, it should be fairly clear that this is a partnership framework between the, the city council and the commission. And we really don't want this to be a forum for accusations. And we understand that there are things that have happened in the past that you all need to process and talk through. But we want to do that in the spirit of moving forward and looking forward as to how we can achieve any sort of solution that's sustainable to move the partnership forward. By way of introduction of the strategic priorities, the strategic plan, rather, of this, for McMinnville Water and Light, similar to what you did for MACTOWN 2032, we asked them to, to prioritize or categorize kind of different strategic priorities. In other words, what are the things that they want to disproportionately invest in or focus on over the next five years? They identified four of them. Organizational focus, which is one that's more internal to the organization in terms of how they're going to be sustainable in terms of their staff, in terms of their project management, et cetera. Stakeholder relationships, how they're engaging externally with, with their, with their clients, with their community, with the citizens of McMinnville, with large businesses, and with you as, as the city as well. Resources and infrastructure, they need to maintain their system. They need to be smart about how they're doing that. They need to potentially expand that system, and they also need to be preparing for, for investments in infrastructure. And then a clear priority around emergency preparedness, which we'll get into here in a little bit, a little bit more about what is, what is Water, the Water and Light's role and responsibility in dealing with emergency preparedness and responding to emergencies day by day, but also in the long-term kind of major emergencies. As Brian alluded, the issue of this framework is housed and is an objective within stakeholder relationships, which I'll just read again. Develop a Water and Light and city framework that focuses on clear roles and responsibilities and opportunities for collaboration on behalf of all citizens of McMinnville. So we're really kind of asking you to take a look at that and compare it to the intended outcome, and hopefully, you can see the connections there. How are we going to do this? We've completed a round of one-on-one conversations. Brian reached out to all of you on the, on the city side. I reached out in one-on-one conversations with the commissioners and spoke with the mayor as well, as kind of the joint representative of both, of joint membership on both bodies. We've wrapped up the commission meeting this morning, and today, we're here with you all in this council meeting. Tomorrow, we will have a joint session where we will use, as Brian mentioned, all the feedback that we got from the commission meeting and the council meeting tonight, and bring forward an agenda that really can have you all react to some recommendations from us as to how to move forward. After that joint session, we will do some follow-up one-on-ones similarly to how we did it before today, and then wrap up with a partnership framework for you all to consider. Turn it back over to Brian.
So that's what we're, that's, that's the process, pretty simple. Before we go into this, into the sort of engagement takeaways and the discussion, it's probably worth taking a couple of minutes to review some key elements from the charter of the McMinnville Water and Light, which I think there are copies of being distributed, so that you all make sure you have one as we go through this, this conversation. So just some high points. It's chapter 10 of the city charter. The commission itself, the Water and Light Commission, is made up of the mayor, serving in her official capacity, and four members of the commission that are appointed by the mayor, each for a four-year term.
And here, the next line has an error in it, that's, which is kind of one of the points of correction. The, the chair, if we're speaking of Water and Light, the chair does not preside in the absence of the mayor, the council president does. That's laid out in the charter. And in the absence of the mayor and the council president, then the chair presides. And in the absence of the mayor, the council president, and the chair, then a pro temp chair is to be elected to run the meeting. So this is how things have been functioning, but that is not what's laid out in the charter on the third bullet point down.
You know, I think you're right, Mayor, and I think I read it. And because there's been this legend, I just read the words and misread them. I think, I think you're right. That is exactly what it says. It definitely says the mayor presides over the meetings. If the mayor's not present, then I think you're right, the council president chairs.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, we'll make that correction.
Thank you. Apologize for the error. Also, the mayor, with the consent of the council, may remove any member of the commission for cause. Says in the charter that they'll have monthly meetings. It takes three members for a quorum. The mayor signs contracts and documents. The clerk signs the minutes and disperses funds. The commission have the charge of the waterworks and lighting plants for the city. So that's a pretty big charge. That's a lot of stuff. They have the power to conduct and manage the business delegated to the commission to establish rates, to provide and shut off water and electrical energy, to make regulations necessary and convenient to conduct business, to acquire property, including the authority to use condemnation to do so, to borrow money. So pretty considerable powers. They're required to provide annual financial reports. The city treasurer is directed to keep the water funds, the light funds, and the city funds separate. It says, it itemizes each of those. There should be the water funds, there should be the light funds, and then the city funds are to be kept in separate accounts. It's called out in the charters. It's fairly straightforward. The language is a little dated, but the charter is fairly straightforward. Any other questions or corrections? Be it somebody. My apologies, Mayor. With that, then, that's, that's what the charter says. We, as Andres said, I talked to each of you individually. He talked to each of the commissioners individually. We asked three or four common questions of everybody, and said we would give you some high-level feedback about what we heard from that. So we'll both weigh in on this. Absolutely, everybody we talked to said that the relationship between the council and the commission is limited, particularly because of COVID and people working from home, and you haven't been able to get physically together. People don't know each other as well as maybe they once did, and it has been strained in recent years. Everybody had a different, different version of that, but we, we heard that repeatedly.
Excuse me, but I personally think it's been strained for longer than COVID.
Fair enough.
Okay, it's been very strained since Paul Elias quit as general manager and, or Cam took over. Deliberately was very abrasive with the city from then on out. So it's been considerably longer.
Thank you.
And I want to make that real clear.
We heard a lot of lack of trust and collaboration, particularly as some issues emerged in the last few years. The lack of strong relationship or strained relationship didn't give you the human sort of tools to navigate some difficult issues. We heard a lot of agreement that roles and responsibilities are unclear. And we heard that from commissioners. We heard it from counselors, people not exactly sure, you know, Water and Light Commissioner is not exactly sure what, what their job respective to the city was, not a real great understanding of what the city does. We heard from many of you that you're not really sure what the commission does or what the Water and Light does and how it all works. There's a lot of don't understand. We heard that the staff work well together. We heard that from, from you all. We heard it from the commissioners. We heard it from the staff. That the conflict has been at the council and commission level, as well as with the executives of the two organizations, has been what the tension is. But the folks out there on the street every day doing their jobs work together pretty well.
And if I just may inject here, that this came up also in the Water and Light meeting, that generally and by majority, the staff of Water and Light and the city of McMinnville work very well together, but that there definitely also has been conflict, especially in, in management at those organizations and things that have caused strain related to specific tasks. And I think the commission kind of accepted and acknowledged that in the moment as well.
Lack of familiarity with the charter. We asked everybody, do you think the charter needs to be updated? And the executive summary of, of the city council members' responses. I don't know. What does it say? And, and commission members weren't a lot stronger than, I don't know. So people weren't real familiar with it. That's partly why we did that.
And let me just add here that the degree or depth of feeling of these things, as Brian has mentioned, in terms of also how long the relationship has been strained or how limited it is, is completely dependent on how long you've been involved with commission business and council business. And so, for example, a commissioner today said, I don't know enough for me to say that my relationship is strained. I don't have a relationship. And so there's, there's a lot of new humans involved in this, and therefore, they're bringing newer perspectives, and some, in some cases, fresher perspectives to how the two organizations should work together. So I just wanted to add.
That was, that was an important comment this afternoon. It's like, I've heard about all this tension, but I haven't experienced it myself.
And I understand that. I mean, I think it's the old guard that, on both sides, that perhaps feel the tension, because it wasn't always this way.
Heard a lot.
I would freely admit I'm part of the old guard on this side, but I know the old guard on the other side is equally strong on this.
A lot of agreement that there's need for improved education and mutual understanding of what each organization is, is up against. The changes to how revenue worked require some attention, because you had real conflict over some revenue moves, and there was a lot of tension around that. So it needs, needs attention. But as we said kind of at the top, in the mayor's said introduction, very strong mutual commitment. Everybody's not confused that you're all doing this for the people of McMinnville, and you want to have a cooperative, positive relationship for people in McMinnville. Do you want to add anything else to that, Andres?
I think the, going back to the lack of familiarity with the charter, is that, you know, the charter has existed as a, as a piece of paper and a document. The familiarity with the charter and the adherence to the charter in terms of how it's actually working are two separate things. And so to the example that we just used around the mayor and the chair, that's maybe how it has been working, where it's not, it's, it's not how the, the charter has outlined that. So there's a lot of, this is the way we've always done it in terms of the city interacting with, with the commission and vice versa, and also, but also, that's not adhering with the charter. So I think it's, it's an important thing to highlight, to build in some educational tools, and I think folks are, are desiring Any questions on these key takeaways? Any, anything that stands out to you all, or any, any disagreements or, or needs for clarification?
Mayor, thank you. I guess one thing that I would say with respect to the fourth bullet down, I think it is absolutely fair to say that the general manager and I have disagreed on some issues and had some tense conversations. I don't know if I'd use the word conflict, because to me, conflict is, sort of implies longstanding enmity and disrespect. I will tell you that since Mr. Dietz became general manager of Water and Light, you and I have met on a monthly basis for the entirety of that time, including during the pandemic and including during the last couple of years, when we didn't necessarily see eye to eye on some of the revenue issues. So we have always had open communication. We have worked hard to represent the interests of our respective organizations and haven't always disagreed. I did not have the opportunity to meet with John's predecessor, and I understand that my predecessor and John's predecessor rarely engaged or rarely communicated. So I will absolutely acknowledge my part in being able to more effectively engage and communicate. And we've continued to meet on a regular basis throughout.
Thank you.
And I would like to speak. I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead.
Is that okay? Kim Carr, when he came on, was, I mean, Kent Taylor worked very hard to maintain a very good relationship. And like I say, prior to Kim Carr's becoming the general manager at Water and Light, I think there was a general reciprocity going on that was pretty, pretty decent. I remember Kent going to the Water and Light and just asking for sharing of certain things, and was turned down flat. And they were absolutely rude, very rude to Martha Meeker in a short period of time that she was city manager. Kent Taylor had 24 years as city manager and was treated like very poorly. So this has been a long-term thing. It's been going on for quite a while. I'm, I'm not entirely sure. I, I mean, I've met with Mr. Dietz before and thought he was a very nice gentleman, but was genuinely surprised by his very adverse attitude towards participating in anything with the city.
Thank you. And then Jeff, I just want to add a point of clarity for everybody, but, but germane to your comments, that we were very clear in the production of this, that this, this entire process is by no means, as it was stated in the rules at the beginning, meant to be a reflection or an, it is not, opportunity is not the right word. It is not a time for any staff review or of, of anybody on our executive team or in the executive branches of our, of our organizations. And so I just want to be clear that the comments I made earlier were not a criticism of, of staff, but more that I feel that the policy bodies, when there has been conflict, that that has, has worked its way through and has caused, and I'm fine to agree not to rest on that word, conflict, but that there has been additional level of strain and beyond your office, you know, that, that there have been, I have witnessed things that have been exceptionally stressful, but not in a way in which it felt like everybody was pulling on the oar in the same direction.
And?
Mr. Chenoweth?
Just to add to that, I mean, when our relationship deteriorates to the point that a lawsuit is being threatened, I think that we probably have a conflict that's occurring. And, and if that's gotten resolved since then, that's great. I'm not aware, and I haven't gone digging. I'm, I'm not interested in picking at scabs, but.
I'll address that. I'll address that by means of saying that, that, that particular point of conflict, which we're not here to discuss, but that particular point of conflict, I, I think that it, you are correct in that it did highlight kind of the organizational breakdown. And also, from my perspective, where I have been uniquely positioned to hear, you know, yeah, both sides in a very, you know, through a different lens, if you will, and, and what I have said, not so much in public meeting, but is that that question that was before us, there, there's kind of one person that can answer that, and that person is a judge. And, and I have no intention, and I have zero intention of leading the city into a lawsuit. And so the answer to that question isn't really what is important or what we need the outcome of this exercise to be. The outcome of this exercise is how do we make sure that these two organizations never, correct the structure so that we don't end up back in that place?
Yeah, I personally would just like to see us cooperate and maybe find some mutual ground, that we can actually help each other, more than anything else. I feel, I've been very upset by what he is referring to, and, and Remy also. And I just, it seems unnecessary. I don't understand the antagonism that we've been met with on that side.
Thank you. And let me just add one thing that at the top, we maybe should have clarified is these, as listed here on this slide, are BDS Planning's words and, and not attributed to any one person or, or people of what we heard, but it's our attempt to categorize. So we are the ones that brought forward the word conflict and other words on here. So just to make that clear, that it's not attributed to any kind of individual conversation that we had, word for word.
Are you saying?
These were, these were themes.
What you're presenting? You're not pointing out one person? Are you pointing, are you talking for the Water and Light?
Oh, no. Well, the source of the information on this slide was my individual conversations with each of you and Andres's conversations with the Water and Light Commissioners, and we also talked to- and we also talked to the executives of both organizations. That's our sole source of information.
So these are themes that emerged from those one-on-ones from both of those bodies?
Correct, yep.
And they were, you know, our wording is ours, but we didn't forward things that only one person said. This was stuff that was, you know, different perspective on each point, maybe, but I'd be surprised if anybody's surprised by the words that are up there.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, and I hope I didn't come across as defensive when I made my comments. My point was that throughout the last several months, John and I have intentionally kept the door of communication open, recognizing that that was the way through this issue, that we needed to continue to communicate. We needed to continue to support our other staff and the organizations to work together. And so, notwithstanding the points of disagreement, we were committed to that open communication. And so, that was the context in which my remarks were intended.
Thank you.
And I do want to say personally, I was very pleased when John Dietz was made general manager. I thought that was a breath of fresh air at the time. I just was genuinely surprised when he and Tom came here and threatened a lawsuit over certain things. It just seemed unrealistic to me.
Any other reactions to this list?
Well, I'd just like to react to that. I think we need to be careful as a body to not, how do I want to say this? I know that we all own our own share. And if we're going to move forward in our relationship, we need to own our portion and not worry so much about the other portions.
Counselor Gary, any thoughts? All right, great. So we have three questions that we want to put forward for your discussion. We asked these same questions of the Water and Light Commission this afternoon. We took notes there. We'll take notes here. And then, we will step away and try and assimilate those comments together to come to the meeting tomorrow with some suggested ideas for what some steps forward might look like for all of you together, the two groups together, to consider. So I'm going to give you the three questions, and then I'm going to let you have at it. So for discussion, what principles might guide the relationship between the city and its utility? What does the council need from the commission for a successful working relationship? And what can the council do to support a successful working relationship? Figuring that a moving forward thing probably would be some principles of how you're going to work together and some activities that would help that happen, that you kind of agree that you're going to do. What do you all think would, a mutual going forward would look like for the best interest of the citizens?
I think some mutual meetings might be helpful. I mean, we never meet with the Water and Light Commission. Remy meets with them. I've occasionally gone to meetings, but was, they promptly throw an executive session and decide that, so I have to leave. So I have not found them to be openly communicative. It would be very helpful if we occasionally met together and could actually talk.
That idea came up earlier, too. Trying not to like load the deck here, having been privy to the conversation earlier, so, but...
I'm sure you could probably just give a...
No, I don't, no, no, I think this has come organically.
I would second that. I would second that. I feel like, you know, you had that bullet point that said there's tension between the council and the commission. I'm not sure I could name the commission members at this time, so I'm not sure how I could have tension with people. I can't even identify who they are, much less have any dialogue with them.
You're not the only one that said that. Counselor Garvin?
Yeah, thank you. Hopefully, you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Just to build on Kelly's point, I would like to see the commission meetings move to a hybrid Zoom format and not just their YouTube link that doesn't allow citizens or counselors or anybody else to raise hands or ask questions at commission meetings. Counselor Menke's point, I think accessibility is one of the reasons why there's a lack of relationship with anybody outside of the commission, just because it's hard to get to a meeting live. And then, if you do get there and there's an executive session, then you leave. And if you want to zoom into something, you basically watch a YouTube link. And yeah, it, I don't know, it's just, it's cumbersome. And I don't think it's, I think it meets the bare minimum of the hybrid policy that the state set out after COVID. And I think it would, for me, it would move the needle forward for two-way communication if they allowed two-way communication in their commission meeting.
And I think, I don't know that it even does meet the requirement that was set out or not, to have them only on YouTube. I'm not sure if it meets that test because of the lack of public participation. And then, since the executive sessions have come up twice now, thank you to a letter from Mr. Davis a couple of months ago. The commission no longer injects executive sessions into the middle of its meetings. We either do them at the beginning or the end of the meeting now.
Which is a lovely thought. I'm glad to hear that. I might also add, and forgive me, Remy, for this. I think there's a total lack of respect for our mayor. And that would include Scott and it would include Remy. And I know it included Rick Olson also. There's just an attitude that the city mayor is just kind of a joke. Perhaps not as much Remy, I don't know. But I do know with Scott and Rick, that was the feeling. And I'd find it insulting, to say the least.
And I think that the kind of obfuscation of the office that's happened is present in some of that. The way, the example earlier on the slide is kind of the perfect example that the office of the mayor was, and the office of the council president were then, were kind of passed over in terms of practice. And so, that's something that's come up repeatedly. So I appreciate you apologizing, but you don't need to apologize. I don't take it personally. I see the effect of the office of mayor not performing in the way that the charter lays out within the organization consistently, which is, again, part of the reason for this practice at this time, because I am clear that we have a manual. We have a how-to book, essentially. And I am not clear why there's the disconnect that has occurred, but it is to help resolve that issue and get these two governing bodies back in line with the guiding documentation. But thank you.
My piece would be in line with that, to what can the council do to support a successful working relationship? Or what can the two bodies do? To me, I'd like to go back to the beginning and reestablish the intent as a baseline and work from there. Of course, I want to work together with the commissions and groups that we form to go and serve the cities. And perhaps from time to time, a reassessment and re-establishment of what those were when it was started, how is that working now? And is there a disconnect? If it's here, then we need to correct it. If it's somewhere else, we need to find it and correct it, too. Be willingness to be a part of that, which we're doing here. And yeah, operating from the point of being on the same team. But I think to me, a re-establishment of what those original relationships were and what the dynamic is, and as a starting point to get back on the road again.
And Adam, I saw your hand was up.
I thought I put it down, sorry.
Other thoughts? I heard a guiding principle there about the spirit of trying to work together for the mutual benefit of the citizens. Other thoughts on principles or what you need from them? Or what you can do to support the relationship?
Well, one thing I brought up earlier, and that I think is very important, is that we work mutually on emergency preparedness. And that should be a guiding principle, ultimately drives at protecting the citizens of McMinnville. And we're stronger, we're stronger when we are working together.
And without a doubt, I mean, they perform a very important task within the city. I mean, we're absolutely, it's incredibly important. And I realize that some of the giveaways that the city has given, like free rideaways and things like that, were because how important this utility is to the city. And I get that. I am totally respectful of that particular concept. I just feel like maybe they pushed it a little too far.
One of the, it's picking up on Counselor Menke's earlier comment about getting together. Kind of the idea was being kicked around a little bit earlier about, you know, an annual or semi-annual get-together, talking about...
Every six months would probably be a good thing.
Talking about, and getting a briefing maybe from the executives about, this is what we're up against in the next six months. So you kind of know, you know, they, a theme there also was that the Water and Light think in terms of 100 years of what they're trying to accomplish. And you're often having to deal with much shorter timeframes at the city, and you've got direct election kind of politics that you're dealing with, which is a different dynamic. And helping you understand what they're trying to accomplish and them understand what you're dealing with, so that when something comes up and it's hard, y'all have a bit of a relationship to fall back on when you have to have a hard conversation about whatever it is. That seemed like a place to start.
I think that would be really helpful. And I think, for whatever reason, they kind of dismiss the political process. But the mayors that we've put before, I mean, Rick Olson had over 20 years of experience. Scott Hill had 20 years of experience in various committees and the city. And Remy certainly has at least eight, nine, or 12 years of experience. I mean, this is a lot of time, and she's been elected, what, twice, three times now? I mean, this is a big deal. You don't get elected that many times unless people trust you and believe in what you're doing. And to just take that as nothing is, I think, insulting, to say the least. Forgive me for my strong words, but I want to get across to you that this is a big deal.
Yep.
That's great.
In terms of the third bullet point, one of the things, we asked the same question inverted. What can the commission do to support a successful working relationship? Building off Brian's point of identifying operational and financial challenges and realities earlier, so that there's more time to react. And this goes back to maybe some of the tension and stress that happened over the revenue stream. I think, you know, and we're not here to litigate the past or to talk about kind of what went wrong, but just to move forward and having that space and carve out to say earlier, here's what we need of each other. Here's our challenges over the next year, the next three years, the next four, planning for 20 years. And as council, here are risks and political challenges that maybe you, commission, don't have to face on a daily basis.
Yeah, part of the reason they're sitting so happy because they haven't been challenged in years and they've never had to run for an election is because we continue to, you know, say, well, I think you're doing a good job. We'll put you back in again because we believe in what you're doing. But there's no particular appreciation for that sentiment.
One of the...
No, I think you're absolutely right. The finances need to be discussed, what we're looking forward to.
One of the, my, one of the intended outcomes of the Water and Light strategic plan, and something that we've been doing here at the city as well in practice, is creating the systems to produce good candidates from broader pools so that we have, so that I have the option of making an appointment, perhaps of somebody that I never knew before. And so, we've done that in a number of ways in the city. We, you know, we've refined how we do appointments for commissions. We've done those changes. And that's also, that succession planning is part of the Water and Light strategic plan at this time. And I also concur that I think one of the big misses is kind of a lack of shared understanding of the financial histories. And I don't mean the, I don't, I do both mean the specific histories, but more, I mean, the pressures and the big things that have happened over time that impact. I don't think the commission, like most people, don't really understand the pressures of the city budget or how we bring money in, how we put it out, how we designate it. I think there's a lack of understanding there. And similarly, I think the council is fairly unaware of how the utility makes its money and also what its financial planning is like. And that came up earlier today, too. I thought it was very valid that, you know, our planning horizons between the utility and the city, they're not the same. And I think that's such critical information. I was thinking back to coming here and reporting to the council the reserve distribution clause that came, that was exercised and then created a large return to Water and Light. And reporting out a large number without context doesn't serve this body as a whole. And so, as one example of the need to kind of have this shared space so that if one body is saving, is using a mechanism to save for a future project, that both entities understand that and understand what the barriers are and how that work can happen together.
Yeah, totally agree. I think really us understanding how the financial flows go with both entities would be very helpful.
Not turning this into an airing of grievances, but, so I'm trying to point it in a constructive way. I think a dedication to, a dedication and a commitment to using a known and agreed-upon set of facts and rational basis for decision-making. You know, we have binders of codes and ordinances, and oftentimes, it's a tall task to stay on target of, this is what we have to make our decision on, not anything that isn't in this binder. We can use experiences and information to get us to a certain point, but at the end of the day, this is what we have to make a decision on. And to that end, I have been watching and recordings and things of commission meetings. And the amount of decisions based on decades-old conversations is concerning. And a lack of sort of, a lack of a willingness to go beyond, oh, this is the conversation I had a long time ago, so that's what we're going on. Institutional knowledge and all of that gravitas and weight is super impactful, but when it's the only thing you're making your decision on, it's not, it's hard to work alongside that perspective and that point of view.
Yeah, there is a concern that there's not a great deal of newness or originality in any thought processes that are going on over there. I know they have some new people that know a lot of things and could be very instrumental, but I think in some cases, because of the makeup of the board itself, the commission, they are not allowed to really have a strong voice.
Council President?
Thank you. Just building on kind of understanding, I don't know if everybody on council has taken the tour of the watershed or taken Water and Light up on any of the tours of their facility or anything, but I think it does two things. It shows intention, that you want to understand what they have going on. And for myself, it gave me this greater understanding of how they can fund some of their things, like timber revenues. And what they're trying to protect is, you know, generational assets. And I know we talked about that high level at the dais before, but if you haven't had that opportunity, I would encourage you. And I think it would, it would go a long way with any commissioners that are present during that tour. I know I have better relationships with some of the commissioners than I used to have after I... after I went on that tour last summer, as well as a very different understanding of how everything works over there and the challenges they face ahead, just from spending a little bit of time. One of those was just a walk and talk with Remy and John Dietz over there at, at the facility. So I think that could go a long ways if we try and put in a little bit of time. And then as far as principles go, you know, when we had conflict before, it was like an us for something. I think we really just have to be citizens of McMinnville focused, and that should be a guiding principle for our conversations going forward. They've always protected the citizens of McMinnville from a water perspective. Anybody outside the city pays one and a half times or double, depending on their contract or if they're just a rare rural customer that has city water. And I've appreciated that. I think understanding kind of some of those nuances of historical knowledge and also as the commission evolves and you have some transition that we as a council have had, you know, probably five to 10 years ahead of what the commission's currently going through. I think just us as a council, understanding that we're just a little ahead of them on transition currently. And so there's some tension just from, from that. And it's not ill-intent, but it's just the nature of transition after decades of service.
Just out of curiosity, which of us have actually gone up and done the watershed? I've done it twice. It's like we've all have.
That's great to know.
But it's not for lack of interest.
Great. So this has been really helpful. We have more time, but we don't need to take it. Again, what we're going to do is take the notes that Jacqueline's been taking during this conversation and put them on the screen with the notes we took this morning and try and blend that into a working draft of some things for y'all to consider tomorrow. We'll walk through a similar kind of setup for that and talk about the same observations. Everybody's heard it now, but I'm going to say it in front of all of you together and then you all have a chance to reflect and share a little bit.
One thing I would, I want to kind of build a little bit on what Adam was saying. I think that it's important when, that we, we, one of our guiding principles be that we're looking at this from the perspective of we're, we're citizens trying to help other citizens, working together for the good of the community. And in that vein, I think we also need to be careful. While I think it's important that we be honest about the things that are potentially frustrations, I think it's important as a guiding principle that we set aside whatever's happened in the past and move forward. If we're, if we're going to, I think, the council and, and the commission, both sides, we need to set all that aside and try to step out of that and move forward. And I think that should be a guiding principle.
Great point.
I want to be clear. The antagonism or whatever I've expressed tonight, I want, I don't want to express this tomorrow. I would like to be open, I would like to listen to what they have to say and hopefully we can move forward. I really feel like communication is the key here and there just hasn't been a lot. I just wanted to be really clear about the, the reasons why I feel this and why I think others have felt it, too.
Yeah, and I think that's great. I think, you know, that's, I opened both of these by talking about the fact that there could be some uncomfortable conversation. And, you know, we just can't get to the root of the problem if we're not willing to actually discuss what the problem was. So, you know, I believe everybody's coming into the space tomorrow with the same intent, the same intent that Counselor Chenoweth just named. That's been the intent from the beginning. And part of getting there are discussing frustrations or perceptions even. And so that's important. Counsel President?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate or put my support in front of having semi-annual meetings or an annual meeting with the caveat that we might have another special call meeting if we're going to be discussing anything that would, you know, have an effect on, on their ratepayers or anything being added to their billing system and have them at the table at the get-go and, and not at the, at the tail end of it. And the other thing is if there was a mechanism in those annual meetings for, you know, both organizations to just have kind of their one-year, five-year, and 10-year struggles or conflicts they see on the horizon, you know, for Water and Light, I could think of, you know, our electrical grid isn't designed to have a ton of EV clients. And if we were to take an approach on natural gas like another city in Oregon has, that could have a very big impact on the resiliency of the Mack Water and Light electrical grid. And so I think us as a body, understanding their challenges and, and having those thoughtful discussions at a minimum at an annual level, I would have full support towards that endeavor.
Yeah, I really like the, the concept that if we're going to undertake something that has a direct impact on Mack Water and Light, bring them to the table before us and having a discussion so we understand how it's going to impact them. As we're making the, trying to make decisions for the best of the community, we do that and avoid without all of the stakeholders at the table. I mean, and I know Jeff, you have your meetings already with leadership, but that doesn't mean we, as a council, are having those meetings and having that understanding. So I think that, I, I, re-echoing what's already been said multiple times, but we, we need to have more meetings together.
And, and I will say I'm very supportive of this. I think this echoes the idea of what we're doing with the school district as well, of trying to bring governing bodies together more frequently. I will say that we do, we are always at that table and that table is always with us in, in the very, in me performing the, the duties of my office and every mayor before me as well.
Absolutely. But just because you're there, that doesn't mean by we're receiving that information to the whole body. There's a difference when you have a dialogue of, of all the commissioners and all of the council together having a conversation about what's coming before them than just having the leaders of the two meeting. It just, it adds more robust discussion and better dialogue to make better decisions.
Absolutely. And Counselor Menke?
I'm sorry.
Oh, please.
Just one more thing. And I know that the Water and Light views with pride that they are one of the lowest fees for, for utility services in the state. And I'm sure that that's been a selling point to bring industry into this town. But I don't know that that's necessarily the goal for the future. And I, I, I need to know why they feel so strongly about this because I know it's a major driving thing with them. I just would like to know under what circumstances they can see us going forward with perhaps a little bit higher rates and, you know, perhaps helping the city also.
Great points, yeah.
Thank you all for your comments. We'll do what I just said, I won't say it again. We will look forward to seeing you tomorrow afternoon. Mayor, did you have some closing thoughts?
I just want to reiterate my gratitude for everybody being here, taking the time. I know we've, we've been doing a heavy lift when it comes to meeting schedules and so I appreciate that, appreciate our city staff supporting us. And there's something I'm supposed to remember to say right now?
No, let me just state for the record that BDS did send a memo to me that I provided to council and I will put it in the record.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for your participation. I look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow for a productive and delightful conversation. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
No, you have three more minutes. No, I'm sorry, just two more. No, three more. We have three more. Yeah. Well, you could have come earlier today to Water and Light and you would, you would... Recording stopped. Yeah, we get a break. Come on. I'm sorry.[1184.56]
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's the executive session.
I did this for that.
I want that. But then the John Puck is, and some of them's on.
But I since, I showed you what I wore my. I love it. I did that for me for Sam at the these graduation. The K nine was Sam. And I have a.
Recording in progress.
I can't believe that.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock PM, and I would like to welcome everybody to the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the McMinnville City Council. Like to call the meeting to order and request our city recorder do a roll call.
Counselor Gary.
Present.
Counselor Minkie.
Present.
Counselor Chanawhat.
Present.
Counselor Payne and Counselor Peralta are absent this evening. Counsel President Garvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drabkin.
Here, thank you. And I would like to call on Counselor Gary and his son Hiram Gary to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done. Thank you so much. Um, we are going to start this evening with some proclamations. Um, tonight, uh, we are, we have three different proclamations. Um, and I'd like to invite up Katie Noid from Parks and Rec. Um, and I, as I begin to read this designation of July as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas McMinnville's Parks and Recreation Programs enhance and improve the social, economic, and environmental fabric of our community, and whereas our Parks and Recreation Programs are important to make me, making McMinnville a super cool place to live, and whereas Parks and Recreation Programs make people want to live here, and whereas Parks and Recreation Areas help the environment and give us fresh air to breathe, and whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas make for fun places for kids and adults to go outside and play, and whereas the city of McMinnville recognizes the benefits of awesome Parks and Recreation Resources, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby extend the spirit of. Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby extend the spirit of fun to the residents of McMinnville in recognizing the month of July as National Parks and Recreation Month. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand this thirteenth day of June in the year two thousand twenty-three. Welcome. And would you like to tell us a bit about perhaps Summer Fun?
Yes. So, thank you, Mayor Drabkin and City Council for the Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. And we are here, Samantha Gary from the library and I are here. So, this is not just Parks and Rec, this is Summer Fun. And we wanted to give you a quick update on the upcoming Summer Fun activities. On the slides behind you and beside you are just some pictures from last summer that we had so much fun with. So, we just wanted to give you an update. What's Summer Fun about? Summer Fun is a collaboration between Parks and Recreation and the Public Library to provide a hundred and seventy-four free programs this summer, free and fun. Programs including Art in the Park, Read and Play. Read and Play is which are, which is when our bookmobile and the new mobile recreation van go to areas around McMinnville, and they provide access to books, steam activities, and snacks. We also have concerts, movies, and more.
And why is Summer Fun important? Summer Fun brings free programs all around McMinnville. We focus on bringing people into our parks and making connections with our facilities and staff outside of our buildings. We prioritize having bilingual and bicultural staff working at our programs to welcome our Spanish-speaking communities at these events. Another awesome benefit for Summer, from Summer Fun is bringing different nonprofits and service groups together to provide more activities to the community.
So, how do we do this? We fund this through the library and Parks and Recreation budgets, which you approve, as well as grants, donors, and our partners. We thank you for your support, and we hope to see you this summer. We also have some Summer Fun calendars. We just got the Summer Fun Booklets, we're calling them Booklets, not passports, this year, that we just got Sam and the library staff and the Parks and Rec staff worked really hard on these, and it has so much information. And we're just really happy to be able to provide these activities to the community.
Wonderful. Thank you. We are so happy that you are providing these activities to the community. Cheers. Next, we have designation of June as Pride Month. And whereas the fight for equality continues for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer, and other historically marginalized members of our community, and the responsibility falls on each of us to form a more equitable and inclusive society, and whereas the city of McMinnville pledges to honor, exhibit, and otherwise live out our core values of stewardship, accountability, courage, and equity, and whereas June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one marks the fifty-second anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, six days of demonstrations led by Marsha P. Johnson, a black transgender woman sparked by the targeting and arrest by police of lesbian, gay, and transgender bar patrons in violation of their civil rights, an event widely recognized as the beginning of the modern gay rights movement, and whereas on June second, two thousand, President Bill Clinton declared June to be Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising, and on June first, two thousand nine, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration by declaring June to be Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And whereas the city of McMinnville stands with the LGBTQIA+ plus community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all and to defend and advocate for LGBTQIA+ rights as human rights, and whereas the extraordinary and inspiring progress LGBTQIA+ Americans continue to face discrimination simply for being who they are, and whereas the city of McMinnville commits to advocate for protections for all LGBTQIA+ individuals and to make our city a place where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender orientation, or gender expression, are treated with dignity and respect, I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Pride Month. And in witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand this thirteenth day of June in the year two thousand and twenty-three. And we are also proclaiming June as a proclamation for the commemoration of Juneteenth as an annual celebration of Black African-American liberation. Whereas Juneteenth is recognized as the end of chattel slavery in the United States, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January first, eighteen sixty-three, declaring enslaved people in the Confederate states to be legally free, however, that proclamation could not be enforced in lands under Confederate control. On April nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Confederate forces surrendered, effectively ending the Civil War. On June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, bringing news of the president's order freeing enslaved people two and a half years after it was first decreed. The, this day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas Oregon's exclusion laws lay the foundation for generations of economic hardship, exclusion, and discrimination against Oregon's Black African-American community, and whereas through other systems of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, exclusionary and destructive housing and transportation policies, denial and disruption of voting access, and mass incarceration, the plunder of Black bodies and Black wealth continued past slavery and persists to this day, affecting the physical and mental health, safety, and education of Black African-Americans. And whereas despite these obstacles, Black African-Americans in Oregon have been and continue to be vital community members and leaders within our state. And whereas Juneteenth has been celebrated in Oregon since nineteen forty-five, when Carla Peoples moved to Portland from Oklahoma to work at the Kaiser shipyards and introduced it to her coworkers. And whereas the Oregon Legislature has unanimously voted to recognize Juneteenth as a legal state holiday beginning in twenty twenty-two, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby recognize and proclaim Juneteenth, June nineteenth. Recognize and proclaim, excuse me, Juneteenth, June nineteenth, as an annual celebration of Black African-American liberation's past, present, and future, and those who continue the work to realize the liberation. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed on this thirteenth day of June, twenty twenty-three. Thank you. We will now take comments from community members. Any interested members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some sort of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. And, and comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of thirty minutes. If you wish to speak today and you're on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros. And when your turn is up, we'll announce your name and unmute your mic. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening, Claudia?
Yes, we'll start with Mark Davis.
Good evening. Thank you. Welcome. We will have a time clock on Zoom this evening that you can watch, so please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Davis, six five two Southeast Washington Street. Thank you, Mayor Drabkin, members of the council. I'd like to comment on your work session of discussing the relationship with Water and Light. I've attended council meetings and Water and Light meetings both for more than ten years. I'm familiar with how both bodies operate. I, you know, would start by also mentioning, we say Water and Light, but I believe the internet connection in this room is provided by the fiber optic cable that Water and Light operates also. And it's, I think it's a really important service in the community that, that could be expanded, but that's a side issue. But just don't forget about our fiber optic system. In, in my observation, Water and Light has always seemed to be kind of independent of the city. And I've always said that I thought that, that Water and Light was probably the most important component of city government. In other words, they're, you know, they're really providing a lot of resources that drive economic development in this community. And I think it's, I'm, I'm totally on board with all of what you've been talking about, about working together. I'm sure they are too. I mean, I know they're good people. I've, I've watched them deliberate. You know, but I, I think there needs to be some way to, you know, make them feel more part of the city. I mean, they, they sit like off there in the distance. They used to be, I think, right here, wasn't it? And I think that's where the Water and Light office was. You know, you could go to Water and Light meetings there. This is forty years ago or something. But, you know, now they're off in the distance. When I attend those meetings, there's usually me as, as the audience and, and Water and Light staff. And I, I'd really like to see them become part of the community and, and get people attending. It's, it's, you know, you can speak at those meetings, just like at these meetings. I think it would be good to, to start making them feel more part of government. I mean, I, I know, I was there when city manager and the finance director came and talked about the city services fee, and I immediately could see that things were not going to go well from that point forward. I mean, it was, you know, I don't know what you could have done at that point, you know, things that already, you know, moved down the line. But hopefully, you know, you can clear the air tomorrow and, you know, get started on a new relationship. And because Water and Light is critical to our future and, and, you know, I, I'm strongly in support of what they're trying to do. So, encourage you to try to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Has anyone else signed up for public comment this evening?
That was everyone that signed up.
Excellent. Would anybody else in the gallery like to provide public comment this evening? Would anybody on Zoom like to provide public comment this evening? Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you. For those of you that are here, we'll now move to advice and information items, starting with reports from counselors on their committee and board assignments. Start to my right this evening, Counselor Minkie.
Affordable housing met the fourth Wednesday of last month, and I guess we, we did approve a, a letter. Honestly, it's been a while since we did this meeting. I guess what sticks out in my mind is since then, myself and Kerry Martin have met twice. We're working on plans to try and obtain money for affordable housing from a different source other than governmental, and also how to, you know, improve what we're presenting overall to the city as far as construction excise tax and other possible things. Our goal is, we probably will not meet this week, but next week our goal is to bring in two other people. Katie Curry's been very instrumental in providing some really interesting stuff from Habitat for Humanity. So, we're, we're really upbeat on some of the information that's happened. And I probably need to talk to you, Mayor, about possibly some connections with other cities that you might have.
Wonderful. Thank you. Counselor Chanawith.
Parkway meets Thursday. MEVLC has not met for a couple of months. Hopefully, we'll be meeting this month. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Gary.
Thank you. MIRAC was trying to have a meeting, but it ended up being with our special called meeting. And so, we're punted on that, but we'll get there eventually. The DEI C had a meeting this last Thursday, but I'm going to miss that. I missed that one, and I'll miss this next one. Doing another job for the city in coaching Hiram's Coach Pitch T-Ball team. So, can't do them both. So, the, that's that. And then the Public Safety Task Force that I liaison to met today, and they spent a bulk of the time learning about sort of fire code and areas of concern related to fire code and prevention.
Thank you very much. Council President.
Airport Commission hasn't met since our last meeting. YCOM, we met today as Executive Board and as a Budget Committee, and pending certification of fire district results tomorrow. Next week, we will adopt a budget with a four percent increase. Historically, YCOMs wanted to maintain a, an opening or an ending fund balance of around five hundred thousand. And that four percent increase gets us about four ninety-five. And the, the talk of the Budget Committee was to, you know, not, not have a real steep increase a couple of years down the road of having to go, you know, to high single or low double digits. And so, we wanted to make sure we maintained a, a soft landing for all of our users and partner agencies. And about two years ago, we, we redid the, the base rule structure. And so, even with that four percent increase, we're still a couple hundred thousand dollars short of what we as a city were paying a couple of physical years ago. So, although it is an increase, it's still a rather fair rate with this new methodology that we use for base rate structure. Other than that, like I mentioned, tomorrow at County Commission meeting at ten AM, that meeting will have the certification of the two-two-seven results. Thursday. Today's Tuesday. Sorry. My, my week is blending together. And outside of that, Visit McMinnville meets next week. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. And Counsel Gary.
Just add one, not liaison duty or report, but something I helped with many years ago. And they had an update on it. The Oregon Bottle Drop is targeting a September opening for their facility that they're putting in on Lafayette Avenue.
Wonderful. Thank you. We'll go to department head reports. City Manager Towery.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Interim City Attorney, Mr. Gowell.
Mayor, this has been a pretty busy month implementing contractual projects that the council has approved and in terms of getting contracts signed and on, and construction in a, in a position where it can get started in both the sewer fund and, and the general funds specifically. So, there's a lot of projects that we've been interfacing with and doing contract reviews and insurance and bonding reviews on. In addition to that, staff asked that our office assist the city in providing a, a draft intergovernmental agreement with the prospective fire, McMinnville Fire District, which I understand does not yet have a board, since it doesn't technically exist yet. But we have prepared a draft which will be coming to the council for your review. This is an, what we call an operations IGA, which in effect would govern the city's activities on behalf of the Fire District during the period of time from July one through December thirty-first, prior to the, the funding of the district materializing through tax revenues, anticipated tax revenues. So, that's been a major activity in the last couple of weeks. You should be seeing a draft of that in your, I, I would hope in your next packet for review and discussion by the council, since this will be an action item, I believe, in early July for the council. I would, I hope will be an action item for the council. Other than that, I have nothing more to report.
Thank you. Finance Director Quayor.
Nothing to add. Nothing to report tonight.
Fire Chief Whiteford.
Well, it's, it's fire season, and we just deployed Yamhill County Team Umatilla to deploy on a conflagration. They're packing and leaving as I speak. Chief Law is taking one volunteer with him on a pressure rig to support the Yamhill County team. So, there can be gone anywhere for up to two weeks for an active fire. That's the Hebron, Mount Hebron Fire. Just let it up. So, other than that, I've been working with the city council on a lot of work and towards consolidation and we're keep, or towards the election results and keep plugging on.
Thank you. And thank you for that. Thank you for extending that participation regionally and keeping us all safe. Our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. IT Director Burke.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
And it looks like Community Development Director Richards is on Zoom.
Excuse me. Yes, sorry. I can't enable my video. So, but I wanted to let you know that we had our second design workshop for the Fox Ridge Road area plan, and it went really well. That project is well underway. And what's coming out of that is exciting. It's our, it's our first UGB area plan, and I think it's really going to set the standard. So, I'm glad to see that. We also have launched our program for business assistance grants and loans. So, a mailer went out to all businesses. We're. went out to all businesses, we're busy marketing as well, so if you know of any businesses that have financial needs, please encourage them to contact us as you work through that grant and loan program. And lastly, I wanted to share with you that the Nav Center called Any Door Place here in McMinnville is mobilized and underway.
Thank you. As everybody had a chance to review the February and March 2023 Cash and Events Investment Report that was in your packet, and are there any questions? Okay. Does any, next, we're going to move to our Consent Agenda. Would any council like to request to have an item removed from the Consent Agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to have item F removed, please.
Thank you. We'll remove item F. Did any other councillor like to have any, any other item removed from the Consent Agenda? Not seeing any. I'll ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, less item F.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Menke, and a second from Councilor Geary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Did you vote? Do I have one abstention?
I'm an aye.
Okay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and we will now, we'll now go to our interim City Attorney, Walt Gowell, to discuss Consent Agenda Item F, which is a motion to approve the revised First Amendment to the City-County Intergovernmental Agreement. Would you like to ask your question to begin, or would you like to give a brief overview to start?
I'd have you do that.
Why don't we do that?
This matter first came to the council on a special meeting last week at the request of County Council, who had had discussions with Special Counsel for the City Truman Stone regarding, regarding concerns by the County Commission that they did not, they did not want to see the county incurring out-of-pocket expense for any third-party claims arising out of the mapping errors that the council, I think, is well aware of in connection with the petition for the formation of the McMinnville Fire District. The original IGA that the city entered into previously had a general indemnification that provided that the city would reimburse the city for all out-of-pocket and direct costs associated with the petition formation and the formation proceedings, which I believe does apply broadly, was intended to apply broadly. It was, it was designed to, to carry out an understanding that the county was being asked to facilitate but not to finance the formation of the, of the petition and the formation of the new Fire District, that that was a process being undertaken by the city and in cooperation with the Rural Fire District. So due to the, due to the subsequent surveying issues that showed up just before the election, the county and Special Counsel, Mr. Stone, went through a process of fine, of fine combing and examining the, the existing Fire District maps. There were several sets of maps, and the chief is probably more familiar with this than I am. However, they found not only the original set of, of, of properties, but they found three or four or five others in the Whiteson area that were in or either inadvertently not put in or should not have been put in or were partially put in, so forth. So they've been going through a process of remapping and recreating a, a revised legal description for the new Fire District, which I am, I'm told by Mr. Stone this morning, he received the updated maps and legal descriptions at 10:04. So it's, it's pretty much fresh off the printing press. That is to be a part of the Formation Board Order that it will be considered by the County Commission on Thursday. The County Council had expressed through Mr. Stone to myself that the Commissioners felt it was important to clarify in the IGA that the mapping issues were covered by the indemnification that the city had previously extended to the county in connection with out-of-pocket costs arising out of the petition formation process. And so what you have before you is a First Amendment to that IGA, which says that in detail, spells it out in a way, this is written by the county's attorney. We had some input. We did make sure that this applied only to third-party claims. We're not talking about claims by the county, but rather third-party claims. And finally, if the county, for some reason, wanted to refer a claim to its, to its insurance company, which may well be the same as the city's insurance company, that any duplicated costs and expenses that were covered by the county's policy would not be indemnified by the city. That was a clause that we asked to be put in, which is included in what you have before you. So this is, this is the same amendment that the council took action on last Wednesday. However, it's been slightly tweaked to include the reference to the additional properties that were discovered. That's, that's the essence of what's before you this evening for approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
So what's the potential for liability exposure in, in this process at this point?
We discussed that. We, we think that, that the liability exposure would come about if someone lost fire coverage, and that somehow resulted in a, in a loss, an uninsured loss to them because of a lapse of coverage. The key element in reducing and we're eliminating serious liability risk is the city agreeing to continue to provide service to the Fire District's new properties for the entire period until the Fire District can assume that role after it is formed and it has acquired the assets of the city and it has acquired the financing to be able to operate. And so the, the, the risk is in not taking action once you've formed, not in taking action as, as we view it. There is, there, there is some, some concern has been expressed about, well, what about, what about people who pay the taxes because there's some properties that won't be initially taxed for the first year? And that circumstance is analogous to a large annexation that would take place. If you were to annex a group of properties into the Fire District, but you were to do that after March 31st, they would be within the district, and they would be entitled to the service. So their insurance companies would be fully, fully, it would be appropriate for them to be able to get insurance. But they would not pay the tax that first year because the deadline had not, not been met for, the tax rolls only roll once a year, and if you miss that, if you annex after a certain date, then you basically don't get taxed until the next time around. That is the, that is the circumstance here with a few, with several, what, 250, 260 We talked about, could somebody who is paying taxes make a claim that they shouldn't have to pay if someone else is not paying? We don't think that's a serious liability risk. People, people who receive service and who have, and are part of a district that has voted to create an assessment process do not have a right to not, to not pay the assessments that are lawfully imposed against their property. And our view is that risk is minimal, so.
Is, and pardon my naivety, but is there a risk, or not naivety, ignorance is a better word, is there a risk of legal exposure to potentially somebody saying that because the ballot measure was not written appropriately, filing suit against the ballot measure, and are we on the hook if that suit takes place?
The Special Counsel for the city issued a legal opinion, which I, which I reviewed, and I think is very well-founded in the statute. It says, the statute on, on special, on Fire District formations, Rural Fire District formations, of which this is, this is one, says that a mistake in the mapping on the initial petition is not a basis for invalidating the formation of the district. It's very specific in statute. It's one of those things for which you cannot undertake to challenge the outcome of an election. And so we think that risk is, there's more of a defense cost risk than there is a risk of losing that type of claim.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for answering all my questions.
Wonderful. Now entertain a motion to pass or to approve the revised First Amendment to the City-County Intergovernmental Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Wow. I have a motion from Council President and a second from the rest of the council. All, I need to declare one. I heard Councilor Geary's voice first. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We're now moving to resolutions. We're going to consider Resolution Number 2023-30, a resolution providing for certain increases to the Fire Department fee schedule that allows the Fire Department to recover costs for fire and EMS services allowed within City Ordinances 434649, and the International Fire Code is adopted by the state of Oregon. Will you please present, Fire Chief?
Thank you. Mayor and council, this evening, Resolution 2023-30 will repeal 202229 and upgrade or increase the EMS charges by 7.9% based on CPI at the end of the year, with a net revenue change of about $55,000. And, oh, and those of you that do math as a matter of living, that doesn't seem to equate, given the number of calls that we run, but we really truly don't net that increase on 85% of our Medicare, Medicaid calls, so, so that's why the actual increase is significantly lower than what the percentage of increase looks like. And also, there's an additional charge. We are, we, we provide, we charge for emergency services for accidents on roadways to nonresidents as allocated, or as allowed by our city ordinance. There's been some insurance changes that do not allow us to bill for the first hour, but they do allow to bill us for prep time, training time, and investments, and I'm thinking about the, trying to think of the depreciation of the equipment used. So there's a $500 prep charge for vehicle accident responses that require actions on the ground, extrication, hazardous materials types of events, not just going to the call and clearing it, but there has to be some, some work involved, and then that is charged to the vehicles' insurance companies for those types of calls. That's in addition. We were billing about $500 an hour for the first call, so it's really not an increase in revenues. It's just a method for us to charge for those, those items that can be charged for, because if we were there for 20 minutes, we were only billable for 20 minutes, and that didn't even equate to the cost for recovery for the billing of that, of that call. So that's why that, that preparation fee has been added into the, to the agreement. Those are the two changes to the, to the fee schedule.
Thank you. Council Discussion?
Rich, did you want to mention the technical error that you and I talked about?
Actually, I cleaned, I, I untechnical did it before I put it in the, or into the packet. Thank you.
Very good.
Well done. Let's have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-30.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Menke and a second from Council President Garvin. All the, do I have any additional discussion? I always skip that. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now consider Resolution 2023-32, Adapting a Supplemental Budget for Fiscal Year 202223 and Making Supplemental Appropriations and Contingency Transfers. I'd like to call on Jennifer Quayar, our Finance Director, to present, please.
Good evening. So this is actually a correction to the supplemental budget that you all passed last meeting. So nothing of substance has changed. We realized I made an error. I, I overestimated the amount of contingency transfer needed because the General Fund is actually receiving $94,000 in transfer revenue in, so that allowed us to reduce the amount of contingency that we need. So that was, that was the data point that was missed. So in the staff report, it highlights the specific line, lines that changed relative the supplemental budget that we presented two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, I guess. So that's my report out. If folks have questions, I am happy to talk about the error specifically or any of the other elements included in the supplemental budget for this fiscal year.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Okay. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2332.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilor Chenoweth and a second from Councilor Menke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously, and now we will move into ordinances. We are going to consider the second reading of Ordinance Number 5134, and I would like to call on Community Development Director Heather Richards to present. Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This is the second reading of your ordinance for amending Title 17 relative to standards for short-term rentals. I wanted to bring to your attention two things. This is, the ordinance has been changed into an emergency ordinance, so the title has "Declaring an Emergency" in it, and then we also added a preamble, the last preamble, to the ordinance, which needs to be read into the record tonight, which is that whereas the City Council finds an emergency exists whereby it is necessary for the new standards to go into effect before the moratorium expires, which is less than 30 days from the passage of this ordinance, this ordinance, as considered by the City Council on June 13, 2023, for a second reading and vote, incorporates an emergency clause also reflected in the title and is effective upon passage. The ordinance does not differ substantially from its terms as it was filed prior to such reading. And then we did, we did add a number five for what your action does, which is that an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance will take effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you very much. And as the council may recall, the ordinance did not have unanimous support on the May 23 meeting, requiring second readings to be conducted at a separate meeting. And then unless any councillor requests otherwise, I would ask our interim City Attorney, Walt Gowell, to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance Number 5134, an ordinance amending Title 17, zoning of the McMinnville Municipal Code and the Northeast Gateway Plan Development Overlay, Ordinance 4971, to amend standards for short-term rentals, approving the decision findings and conclusionary findings for dockets G1-23, ending the moratorium enacted by Ordinance Number 5118, and extended by Ordinance Number 5127, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Council Discussion or deliberations? Council President.
Yeah, Walt, if this is passed or isn't passed, in any case, is there the ability for, just from a legal perspective, to add or, or delete anything in that ordinance without it going through a full review of Planning Commission, like if we wanted to add a residency requirement as a state of Oregon or something of that nature?
Well, I would say that the council always has the authority to amend its own ordinances. I would secondarily say that typically the council, if it wants, if it, if it wants to amend those ordinances as, as they relate to land use ordinances, must pass them through your Planning Commission and hold an appropriate, to get an appropriate recommendation as required by your process. If it's not a planning ordinance within the way Mr. Kabisman would define that, then, then you would not necessarily need to do that. But in any event, it's not the end of the road for your ability to amend and further refine the ordinance.
Okay. I guess my thoughts on this ordinance is, you know, A, I don't want to push it back to Planning Commission. I think they have more important work to do in their work plan, but B, increasing this, the spacing requirement just pushes short-term rentals more out into farther areas of the community. It doesn't limit the, the amount of short-term rentals we could have, and it also doesn't address the bad actors that we've had issues with throughout the city from a short-term rental perspective of non-area managed rentals. So I think it misses the mark as, as far as what I was looking for or hoping for out of this amendment, and for that reason, I'll, I'll be voting no tonight.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Councillor Gary?
No, I said my piece in the first meeting. I, I hope there's more coming, but this will work for now.
I would agree with councillor Gary. I, it may not be perfect at this point in time, but I would like to see at least this be put in place.
Thank you. Councillor Chenoweth?
I appreciate the words of both Gary and Garvin, but tend to lean more toward Garvin's view of what is in this ordinance. I don't think, I think it's, it's not really addressing the problem. And I, and I think that it's, it's, I don't think it's going to do what we want it to do.
Thank you. I think I'll just add my thoughts since everyone else has spoken as well. I, as I've said before, I was hoping for a more restrictive recommendation out of planning commission. And I think what I haven't necessarily said in public meeting is that I do believe that the zoning is meant to dictate the use, not vice versa, and that we shouldn't be cutting holes in our, our zoning. However, I do find that this at least moves the needle a little bit, and I also find that in terms of the, the reflection on, on pushing the problem, one of the problems with the spacing requirement is the ghosting of neighborhoods. And, and so the 500 feet does address that while it might not limit the total number of vacation rentals, it, it does limit having entire neighborhood or, or larger portions of dense, it, it spreads the problem out a little bit. And so with that, I would ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5134.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from councillor Gary and a second from councillor Manke. All those, and I would ask Claudia to poll the council, please.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Manke?
Aye.
Councillor Chenoweth?
Nay.
Councillor President Garvin?
Nay.
And Mayor Drapkin?
Aye. Ordinance number 1, 5134 is adopted by a vote of three to two. Thank you very much. Our next two ordinance will be covered under one staff report, but will be voted on separately. And so next we will consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5135. And I'll start by asking if any council member needs to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance.
I don't even, FTV.
Does not seem anybody is recusing themselves, which I'm not looking for. I'm just catching up in my packet in front of me here real quick. There's nothing I know that, okay. We will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5135. Does any councillor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will our interim city attorney Walt Gowell please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 5135, an ordinance amending the Comcast cable television franchise agreement to extend the term.
And I would ask our finance director, Jennifer Quayle, to present.
So, we spoke about this, oh gosh, in December, so almost six months ago at this point, because both of our cable franchise agreements were, were ending. So we've been in the process of negotiating this one with Comcast, and we're just, we're not there yet. And so we believe with three additional months, we'd be able to bring you an agreement for consideration for a new stretch of, to be proposed 10 years, new cable franchise agreement with Comcast. And just, I actually extended it more than just a simple three months. I moved it out to the date of your first meeting in September so that we would be able to talk about it then as the, the last meeting opportunity, but we may have it before you ahead of that. So.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Council president?
With this extension, is any new agreement? Are you pursuing like retroactive reimbursement? If, I'm guessing the rate's going to go up, so are we going to be able to get recovery for that?
Well, no, actually, the, the rate can't go up because we're already at the federal maximum. So, so that wouldn't change. I suppose it is possible because I believe we, we intend to discuss the peg rate, and I, I want to be conscious of sharing a lot of detail at this point because we are in negotiations. But, so that could, that could be there, but no, I, I doubt that we would request some kind of retroactive action.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. This is, I'll just take a moment to highlight that this is one of these opportunities where as the council and commission continue to work together, there can be great information sharing because where these lines fall on our polls, the ownership of those polls, the maintenance of those lines on the polls, all of those things affect those budgetary decisions. So, any other council discussion? Okay, I would ask for a motion to pass ordinance 5135 to a second reading.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from councillor Gary and a second from councillor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. And the motion passes unanimously. I would ask our interim city attorney Walt Gowell to read the ordinance again by title only.
Ordinance number 5135, an ordinance amending the Comcast cable television franchise agreement to extend the term.
Thank you. And I would ask for a motion to approve ordinance number 5135.
So moved.
I have a motion from councillor Chenoweth and a second from councillor Manke. And would our city recorder please poll the council?
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Manke?
Aye.
Councillor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councillor President Garvin?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5135 is adopted unanimously. We will now consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5136. Does any councillor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves from voting on this ordinance? We'll now consider the matter of ordinance 5136. Does any councillor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will our interim city attorney Walt Gowell please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 5136, an ordinance extending the term of the Zipley Fiber Cable Television Franchise Agreement.
I will ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5136 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
And I have a motion from councillor Manke and a second from councillor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. And the motion passes unanimously. Will you read the ordinance again by title only, please, sir?
Ordinance number 5136, an ordinance extending the term of the Zipley Fiber Cable Television Franchise Agreement.
Thank you. And I will ask for one more motion to adopt ordinance number 5136.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from councillor Chenoweth, a second from councillor Manke, and I'll ask our city recorder to poll the council.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Manke?
Aye.
Councillor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councillor President Garvin?
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance number 5136 is adopted unanimously. You are all welcome to stay for our urban renewal meeting. Of course, we'll then be going into executive session, so sorry we can't invite you to stay for that, but I will now adjourn this McMinnville, McMinnville City Council meeting at 7:52 PM. Thank you. Howdy, Commissioner? I would like to-
Recording stopped.
Oh, wait, but we're going to go right into the urban renewal.
Recording in progress.
I can't tell you what we talked about while the video was off, but. I would now like to call the, it is 7:53 on June 13, 2023, and we are now holding a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. I would like to call the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency meeting to order. We'll be conducting a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2324 urban renewal budget as approved by the budget committee. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask finance director Quayle to present.
Yes, good evening. So, this is a budget hearing to get public comment on the proposed budget for adoption for the urban renewal district for the fiscal year 202324. These are, the requirements for the, for the budget hearing are described in Oregon statute. It has been properly noticed in terms of the timeframe needed. I can tell you that I have received no public comment regarding this budget through the website opportunity for weighing in on, on budget matters. And, I mean, that's, that's what I've got. What, what is in here is the same budget that the budget committee did adopt back on May 17th. So there, there are no changes from that part of the process.
Thank you. I'll now call for public testimony. Would any member of the public like to provide testimony this evening? Is there anybody on, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to provide a public comment this evening? No. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. We'll now go to the consent agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the consent agenda? And would any councillor request to have any item removed? Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion from councillor Manke.
Second.
And a second from councillor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. The consent agenda has passed unanimously, and we will now consider resolution 2023-02, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, making appropriations and declaring the tax increment. I will again call on our finance director, Jennifer Quayle, to present.
Okay. So, so this evening, the resolution before you will serve to appropriate funding for the urban renewal district for the 202324 fiscal year, which begins July 1, 2023. It also includes the statement on tax increment that we intend to request the full amount allowed under law for urban renewal districts above the frozen value. Occasionally, there will be changes proposed between the, the document or the, the budget that was approved by the budget committee and what comes before you for appropriation. And in this case, there have been no changes. So there's, there's no additional or new information included in what the resolution describes for appropriations for next year.
Thank you very much. Is there any council discussion? I would now ask for a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2324 budget, make appropriations, and declare the tax increment for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan area.
I move that.
Councillor Gary has moved.
Second.
Councillor Manke has seconded to adopt resolution number 2023-03, adopting the 2324 budget in the amount of $2,572,556 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, to make appropriations in the amount of $2,147,097, and to certify to the county assessor a request for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan area for the maximum amount of revenue that may be raised by dividing the taxes under section 1C, article 9 of the Oregon Constitution and ORS chapter 457. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. And I will now adjourn this Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 7:58 PM, and we will go into executive session in the conference room. Thank you.